I'm going to call the meeting in order at 7:30. Roll call, William Johnston here. Thomas Craftenino.
Here.
Lynn Coligan.
Here.
Lisa Cracollet.
Yes.
We also have Stephen Kiley, town attorney, present. Oh, Phil Diorio here, sorry. First order of business is to review and approve the November 13th, 2024 minutes. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have two resolutions tonight. The first one is 60 Smith Street. Christina, will you give us a full synopsis of that?
Application by 60 Smith Street LLC for varying the 60 Smith Street, Cheltrily, New York, Suffolk County Tech Map 700-14-3-72.2 and 72.3 and 72.5. The zoning board of appeals has reviewed the subject application. The applicant requests two area variances in connection with a proposed deer fence enclosure. The town code section 133-29, 1A and B requires that fencing located in the front yard setback area not have a height greater than four feet and fencing located in the rear or side yard not to exceed six feet. And here, all of the proposed fencing will be eight feet in height. Those variants of two to four feet are required. The resolution of the board is to approve the request of two area variances as reflected within the James P. Walsh Land Surveyors dated May 17, 2018, and Nelson Veridwald Landscape Architects Plans dated February 5, 2024. The conditions of the resolutions are upon the seizing of the farm operation on the subject property for a period of two consecutive years, the subject variances shall immediately finguish and the fencing shall be brought into compliance. Second, any property located between the deer fencing and the lot line is not landscaped shall be kept free and clear of warrants, dead trees, and overgrown invasives so that deer may have an unobstructed pathway and neighboring fencing will not be damaged. Three, in order to maintain the arbitrage scenic vista, there shall be no, there shall not be any screening whether by fencing or vegetated higher than four feet along the subject fence that would impede the view of the scene.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
It will do a roll call vote. William Johnston?
Yes.
Thomas Craftenino?
Yes.
Lynn Coligan?
Yes.
Lisa Cracollet?
Stand.
Phil Diorio votes yes. Next resolution is 57 South Ferry Road. Christina, will you give us a little synopsis here?
Application by James Dawson and Rogaland for variance at 57 South Ferry Road, Cheltrily, New York, Suffolk County Tech Map 700-19-2-116.1. The zoning board of appeals reviewed the subject application where the applicant requests an area variance to maintain a studio with tech and steps which is located on the subject property. Town code section 133-7B5B3 requires that accessory buildings hold a 15-feet side yard setback, and here, the existing subject studio is holding 0.3 feet. Those variants of 14.7 feet is required. The resolution of the board is to deny the request for area variance to maintain the subject studio and the location as shown on the Sherman Engineering Site Plan, laws revised May 18, 2023, which was based on a hammer survey dated June 16, 2008, laws revised August 18, 2022.
I have a motion to, what do we call this, Stephen? If we're voting to deny, to approve this resolution?
Yeah, so it'd be, well, it's a motion to deny the request there.
So, what, how do we phrase that, Steve?
Yeah, just a motion to deny.
Okay, may I have a motion to deny the request?
Subject there.
I'll motion. I'll second.
Okay, do a roll call vote. William Johnston?
Yes.
Thomas Craftenino?
Yes.
Lynn Coligan?
Yes.
Lisa Cracollet?
Yes.
And Phil Diorio votes yes. And we have three applications on our agenda tonight. The first is 75, 73 and Shore Road and 65 Stern Point Road. This is a continuation of a hearing. What's that?
Good correspondence.
Okay, now, this is a continuation of a hearing. Christina, can you recap our written correspondence?
There was a letter of support from Sue and Joe Hines and a letter of support from James Henluser from Sagapana. We received correspondence from the town clerk that the negative declaration has been adopted by the town board.
That's the SECA view that we were waiting for.
Correct.
And just as a sort of update for everyone here, you know, when we first heard this application, we were going to be responsible for some sort of site plan review on this, but since then, the town board has taken over the site plan review. And so what we are here to talk about tonight is just the application for a special permit to operate an educational facility. None of the other aspects of this involve this board at this time. So, do we have someone to present from Pearlman?
Good morning, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Frank Isler. I'm an attorney from Riverhead, Smith, Finkleston, Humboldt. I'm representing the Pearlman applicant. We were here back in March and made a presentation on the special permit, which was limited basically, as the chair had said. We won't repeat that presentation. We'll ask the board to, you know, know what's in the record and review it as if we were presenting again today, just to save time. There are a few things I would like to bring to the board to mention. The chairman already made comment to it. First, the work session in late October, the town board, which has the site plan jurisdiction, approved for the direction that a resolution be prepared, the site plan application that we had submitted to the town board. One modification was made by the town board, which we've accepted, which was to relocate one of the new proposed buildings further away from our neighbor's property, Mr. Lang's property. And that is, that site plan approval process is now going forward, the SECA determination that you were waiting for, arguing, and that the town board had to make as the lead agency has been approved by the town board by resolution yesterday. The zoning board is an involved agency in the SECA process that was undertaken. This was a type one action because we needed 20, we were seeking 20 more apartment spaces, which triggered a type one. A full environmental review was done by the town's expert environmental consultants, resulting in a full environmental impact statement and also a full review of the potential impacts, all the factors to be considered. In yesterday's resolution, the town board rendered a negative declaration, which means that this project, as proposed, will not have a significant impact on the environment and therefore no further environmental review is necessary. And the various boards that are involved in granting permits can now proceed with the knowledge that the environmental issues are not non-existent for this project. What's critical to our application here, which is the chair indicating this, we're making an application as a, for an educational institution, special permit under the double A zoning. And for that, we have to show we are an educational institution. And two, that we're compatible, our uses compatible under the special permit factors of your code with the immediate area where we're located now. As you know, we've been there for 30 years. We seem to be compatible because everyone seems to enjoy us and appreciate us. But in the SECA finding, there were three particular findings that are at the heart of these two issues. Are we an educational institution and how do we fit within the impact, our use fit within the impact of the area? So, on page 13 of the findings report that was adopted by the town board, one finding, number one, under article 12 of this report, the project includes the continuation of the current use of the site for music education. Will not change the intensity of the existing use on the site and the onsite improvements would not impact the site or surrounding properties. So that was one critical finding that the town board made as lead agency. The second one was agent use or intensity of use. This was a category that they had to address. The proposed action will not introduce a new land use or change the intensity of the existing use on the subject program. As such, it would not be, it will have no significant adverse impacts. The next find, finding that was made was for land use compatibility. Quoting again from the report, the town board's lead agency found that the permanent music program is a music educational institution presenting, providing around the overnight accommodations onsite during the summer months for students, faculty, and staff, which has occupied this site for at least 24 years. The legalization of the historic and current use of the property and the proposed building and site improvements will be compatible with the existing use of the subject property and with the local plans of the town. These findings go to the heart of what we have to show for the special permit. And we made the presentation at the last meeting that we qualify as an educational institution by virtue of our corporate documents. We have the correct IRS designation that your code requires. All of those items we've checked off. And in addition to what we showed before, these critical findings really show that we meet the criteria of the special permit and in all respects. So unless you have any questions for me?
So, there's still, there's no plan to expand the number of students attending this. It's all, it's all stay in the way at once, right? That's, that was presented the last.
I promise.
Would you prefer her to stand?
If she, if she would like to address us, that's fine. If not, it's, okay.
That's it. I promise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to weigh in on this application? Please come up and state your name, record.
Look, Jim Lang. So, you just found out that they are moving one cabin. Was the other side, is that what the gentleman just said?
Yes.
So they can move one, but not all of them?
You know, that's, so, Jim, the place now for this is at the town board with the site plan review. Yeah, that's, that's out of our hands at this point.
So my other question is, the, so if it gets changed to an educational facility, so in 30 years, when I'm off the face of this earth and my kids and my nieces and nephews are at home, my problem, what's to say that, what's control that it only stays an educational facility summertime, not a year-round for profit? Or gets sold to become a, another sunset beach or another pridwin?
So, I, I, I would say that, that at this point, if they do get this special permit, that any change in use will require some visit to the zoning board of appeals or the town board. And, you know, in terms of, I think that the town board's findings discussed no increase in intensity. And I think that if there was some real increase in intensity down the road, that again would require some sort of action by, they would have to apply for some sort of something from the town board or from the ZBA.
Definitely trigger a new site plan application if it's.
And they would have to fight it there.
Correct. If they wanted to change the use from educational institution to something else, the site plan code requires them to go back and get either a site plan amendment or submit a new site plan for that use. Also, if it's no longer an educational institution, this special permit will be extinguished and they'd have to go for whatever you, if it's not a permitted as of right use, they would have to get an approval for a special permit from either the town board or the zoning board.
And I would say that almost every use, other than single-family residents, would require that.
So, so if that doesn't get approved, it would just go back to you subdivide and it would become private.
I mean, that's, someone could do that, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Please step up and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Mike Gaynor, Eight Coven Lane. I just want to say that I support the application for the Pearlman Center. They've been a good corporate citizen. They, they followed all the rules for this application. They submitted their application in advance, making the change that they're doing out here. They've been in for review for close to a year at this point. And after the pridwin debacle, what went on there with the planning board, how long it took to get them to get approved on that, I think the town should make whatever efforts they can do to get them digging out there. They were trying to be digging on that project in September. Now, we're going to get into the cold months and I don't know when the town's going to get their site plan review completed, but anything the town can do to get them and their organization, get them their permit so they can get moving would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else care to? No? How about out in Zoom land, Christina? Do you have somebody out there? No, nobody? So, pull up my calendar here. So, the work session is the fourth, so I like to make a motion to close the hearing. Keep it open to written correspondence until November 27th, and then we'll discuss it at our December 4th work session. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Right. Next up, we have 80 Shore Road, Sylvester Manor. Do we have any correspondence on that, Christina?
We received a request from a German.
Okay, so, I'd like to say I want this thing to either move forward or go away. I think maybe we give them 60 days or 90 days, whatever, something like that, and either they have to come and present or we have to consider the application withdrawn. Do you want to say, do you want to put it off to February? Present, that's, or do you want to put it off to March or?
Do we need Stephen to guide us on that?
I don't think so.
Okay. 60 days sounds.
Well, I don't, I just want to go to like a hearing date, so either.
Is it a February?
February.
90 days?
Yeah, so.
19?
February 19th.
That's a work session.
What's that? Oh, sorry, the 26th.
26th?
So, I would propose that we grant an adjournment to February 26th and either they present that night or we consider the application withdrawn.
We legally do that?
Stephen?
Yes, sir.
I need a little legal advice here. I mean, we can't, you know, we can, it's our discretion. I don't think that we need to grant adjournments all the time. So, Stephen, we were talking about if Sylvester Manor is, you know, gives them another three months, say till February 26th, and at that point, either they have to present or we have to consider the application withdrawn.
Correct.
Or abandoned, whatever we want to call it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, we'll, can I have a motion to adjourn this until February 26th?
You might want to put in that resolution that it's a final adjournment too.
Okay, a final adjournment until.
Stephen, there's an administrative error inside of their application that's going to cause that application to get bumped again. This is, this is not a point of record. It's just an administrative error. I think, I think the town should hear it. It's a glaring administrative error that actually the board and you should have caught. It's a glaring error.
You got to, you have to stand up.
I promise this will not take a minute. I'm not trying to start a fight. It's just.
Okay, please. Okay. We haven't actually adjourned it yet again, so shall we hear from Mr. Gaynor on this? I mean, it's.
It can't go to any substance whatsoever.
It's not substance whatsoever. It's an administrative error on the application. It's page 31.
Is it relevant to what we're talking about?
Yes, absolutely. It's very simple. It's very simple. I mean, I'll be out of here in 30 seconds.
Okay, please, let's, let's.
Mike Gaynor, Eight Coven Lane, on page 31 and 32 of the application, the application says, if you just open up the application, it says, do you have any notices of violation from the building department on your application? And they say no. And then they notarize that statement to be truthful statement, that's not true. And Stephen knows that they have a stack of violations on here. One specific violation that they have that speaks directly to this application and it applies to your test when you go to review your test, they say inside that they have been cited for operating a not-for-profit educational institution inside of a double A zone without a special permit. So when you go to your test and you say, do they, was this something that was self-created? Of course, it was self-created. So they need to amend or append or refile their application and make certain that all, that they correct that statement, that they do have not just one, they have a stack of violations at this point. And they all need to be presented inside of the application so the board can review those, right? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we get a motion here to give a final adjournment until February 26th?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is 3 Locust Avenue Cummings. I'm going to repeat myself. I am friend of the applicant. Give me just a second. I guess I'll leave my stuff here. I really just want to get my truck and go.
Do we receive any written correspondence, Christina, regarding the application?
We received correspondence from Todd and Erin in support of the application. Then we received two options of the landscape plan from the applicant. We received letters from Keith Lucy Arborist contesting that a Japanese maple was in decline and his recommendation to remove the tree. Received a letter from Hunt opposing the application. Letter from Heights, it remains unsupportive of the application. So that letter was attached. A couple other letters. One was from Christopher Herman, neighbor, favoring option B of the landscape plan and thought wasn't last name, but assuming freedom as well. And he prefers option A of the landscape plan.
Thank you. Okay. So and I know we had asked the applicant to provide those supporting documents. Is there anybody here to present on them?
Yeah, Lisa, I'm here. Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. Bill Cummings is in the audience. I apologize, I had to do this by Zoom. I just want to go over the application very, very quickly again, just to refresh everybody's memory. It's been a couple of months. So if I can, if I can share my screen, I'll go over very quickly what we're asking to do.
One second. Go ahead, Matt.
Gotcha. Okay, great.
Yeah, Lenny.
Okay. Just very quickly, existing site. We've got Meadow Place to the north, Locust Avenue to the east. Beyond that is Chase Creek. There's a ten-foot-wide Heights Alley to the south of the property. And the property owner also has the property that's adjacent. We'll call it to the west. It's to the northwest. We've got two front yard setbacks, one off of Locust Avenue and one off of Meadow Avenue, both forty-foot front yard setbacks. And then we've got the twenty-five-foot side yard setback off of the alley. What we're looking to do is on the front of the house, the Locust Avenue side and the alley side, there's an existing covered porch on the north portion. And on the south portion, it's an enclosed covered porch. We're looking to put a second floor deck over top of that. This area is the, on the inside of the building, there's two of the four bed and breakfast bedrooms. So there, those are the two rooms that will have access out onto this porch deck. So from the, from the creek side view, you're going to have, you know, basically the elevation is going to stay very similar to what's there now. You're going to have the new porch railings and porch above the existing covered deck or covered porch, excuse me. And then this is from the, from the side, from the alley view and from the side yard property owner's view. So that shows in blue the area of the, where the deck is going to be and where that railing would be, the safety railing. This is a view of the front of the house. That is a Japanese maple. That, that's the one that Bartlett email was on earlier in the year. This maple and the one to the north were both not doing very well. So they brought in Bartlett to come in and do what they can to try and do some, some maintenance and, and help these trees along, help these trees get back into better health. For the northern tree, it worked out fine. For the southern tree, it did not. And that's what the Bartlett email earlier basically said, that the health of the tree is in significant decline. Without the application of pesticides and other chemical treatment measures, the odds of this tree getting any better and having a recovery are very slim. Obviously, putting any type of treatment in this area, this close to the creek, pesticides, fertilizers, anything like that to help this tree is, is just not a good idea. It was their recommendation that the tree be taken down. This is a view. That's a tree on your right-hand side. You've got the Cummings property, the house on the right. The Hunt house is on the left. And those trees and vegetation are down inside the Heights Alley. That's between those two properties. This is again, looking from the corner of Locust. And you're looking in Oxford and you're looking past the Hunt property, which is on your left-hand side. They've got that large fir tree and then their house. There's open lawn that goes over toward the, toward the Cummings property. This is a recent photograph of the two Japanese maples. So you can clearly see the difference in the health of these two trees from the one on the right to the northern tree and the one on the left, the southern tree. And again, it's the southern tree that they're, that they're, they're going to be taking down. Taking down that tree opens up the, the view for the roof, the deck that's on the roof of the porch. So this is the first vegetation plan. This is the reason why we came back at this hearing. This is a holdover from that September hearing. This is what Bill Cummings would like to do. He would like to have the wax myrtle. It's more of a hedge. It can be trimmed. It can be maintained. So it's not, not much taller than ten, twelve, fourteen feet. It is going to, it is going to provide like a, a green wall along the property line. When they're planted, they'll be at six to eight feet tall, two and a, two and a half inch trunk caliper. So that it's going to take a little bit of time for it to really fill in and grow to a height that's going to block the view of that second floor deck to the, to the Hunt's property. That's what Bill would like to do. We had talked to Bridge about it and he doesn't, he doesn't want anything there to begin with. But and he can, he can tell you about that and his position on that. But one of the things that he had expressed concern with was, was airflow getting through. And basically putting up a green wall there would, would really choke out his house and not allow views, not allow air to come through. So with that in mind, Bill had his landscape architect put together a secondary design, which is some staggered green giant fir trees. And having them staggered would allow air to get through. It's not going to be as much of a green wall that, that would be as intrusive on the alleyway or on the neighboring property. But it would still provide that level of, of privacy. You know, I, I guess I had made the incorrect assumption on the letter that was provided to the board during the September hearing, when the neighbors had mentioned that their concerns were of noise and light coming from the second floor porch. I took that to mean, you know, privacy. And that, you know, that noise and light would have a negative impact on their use of their porch. So we had taken that to mean, okay, let's put something up that will mitigate the noise and light from this proposed deck so that it doesn't have that negative impact. So that's why we went down this road. That's why we came back for this, for this subsequent hearing, was to present what we felt were good, good compromises, good mitigation to help protect the neighbor from any negative impacts on that, from that deck. One of the things that was mentioned was a concern about line of sight. This, this blue line that goes up that, that house right in the middle of the screen is the Hunt's house. The house just, just above that, to the north of that, is the Cummings house. So that line of, that arrow or that, that straight line that's going out towards that, that point in the creek, that's where that line of sight is. So it just goes just past the Cummings house. And that's where we would recommend that these new plantings be stopped. It's about thirty feet, thirty-five feet from the property corner. So that, you know, Bill would like to have the, the plantings go out further. But in the interest of not blocking any more of the, of the Hunt's view that's out toward that portion of the property and through those trees and out to the creek, we'd keep it, you know, keep the plantings pulled back a little bit from that front corner. This, so basically this would be the view at the Hunt's property would be from like on the shoreline where that little boat is, going up to where the dead of the line is to the north. Right now, there's a big fir tree right in front of their porch, which kind of directs that view more to the east and not as much to the south. And again, the, we'd gone over this last time, so I won't go into detail, heavy detail on this. But having a porch above or a deck, excuse me, above a porch is not unheard of in the Heights. It's on properties that are within the historic district and properties that are not within the historic district. You know, something as simple as one Oxford, the one on the other side of the Hunt's property. Not sure why this one isn't in the historic district. It was built in the early eighteen hundreds, I believe, or mid eighteen hundreds. Same thing with carriers up here.
Can I answer with a question?
Historic district. But it was.
Matt?
Yes.
Can I, I have a question regarding all, all the porches that you're finding. Are any of them operating as a bed and breakfast as the applicant does?
No, no, none of these. These are all just single-family dwellings.
Thank you.
Yep. So here's another one that's again porch, deck above a porch, single-family dwelling, private home, not on historic registry, even though same thing, late eighteen hundreds, in the middle of the heart of the historic district. But I believe this one's not on there because it had significant renovations done prior to the, the, the area being included in the registry. This one, this property's not in the historic registry, but it is also just a good example of another building, a commercial building with the, with the deck over the porch. This one is in the historic district, private residence with a deck over the porch. So that's what I have as far as my presentation. If, if you've got any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to, to answer anything. Otherwise, if, you know, I can just step back into the background and answer any questions the board may have after other people speak.
Matt, I do have a question for you about the vegetation plan. I mean, I see what you were trying to do to mitigate the noise and light based on the neighbor's reaction. Is it, is it something that the applicant would, if they don't want the vegetation buffer there? Is that something that the applicant would be okay entertaining? Not putting the vegetation buffer there?
Bill wants the vegetation to a certain, to a certain extent. It doesn't need to be a full, you know, length, you know, twenty-five-foot-high, you know, wall of hedge. But he does want something to help protect a little bit of privacy for his property as well as for the Hunts. And the Hunts may not want that. But that's, you know, ideally, we're here for the deck. And that's ideally what he would like to have. He would also like to have an ability to protect the privacy on his property a little bit as well. Or I should say, in getting the deck, he doesn't want to forfeit his ability to provide privacy for his own property.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt?
Yes.
It's Lynn. If you had to say what the primary motivation is for wanting the deck, can you articulate that in simple terms?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. He sees it as a very nice amenity for the bed and breakfast. There's no, you know, we're not hiding that. There, there, you know, there's nothing to be ashamed of for that. It's a, you know, it's a legal use in double A zone. He's allowed to have his bed and breakfast. There's nothing non-conforming about it. There's, you know, nothing along those lines. The, you know, the idea of, at the previous hearing, something was mentioned that the concern was that someone would be up there, you know, talking on a cell phone, working on their computer, not having a, implying that they wouldn't have a consideration to the neighbors and the neighborhood as if they would if they were living there full-time, a full-time resident, you know, somebody who's just come into the, the bed and breakfast for a weekend. I think that the, the correspondence from two of the neighbors, Kreitzelmann and Ward, I believe it was, who both said that they've never had a problem. And even the Hunts, I believe, said it at the last hearing. They've never had a problem with any of the, any of the people staying at the, at the bed and breakfast. So and they're already using outdoor components of the property, whether it's Adirondacks on the lawn, the hammock on the Heights property, which by the Heights letter, I understand they don't have permission for. Or, you know, using the, the screened-in porch, you know, the enclosed portion of the porch. All the windows are open in the summertime. You know, so they're using this property in a very similar way. So the use and the impact on the neighbors, we don't see how that's going to change. You know, concern about light from a second floor deck, it's going to be the same concern about lights from a bedroom, a second floor bedroom. You know, if the curtains aren't pulled, the lights are coming, the lights coming out. Somebody or a couple of people sitting on that deck having, you know, a couple of drinks and having a conversation, are you going to be able to hear them? Of course you are. But you're going to be able to hear that same activity if it's on the front porch of the house, if it's in the screen room, if it's on the, out on the lawn. So, you know, the, the use here is, is part and parcel with what's already going on.
Okay, thank you. Matt, I have another question for you. I, I believe we brought it up last time in an attempt to try to mitigate that noise. I know it was one continuous deck. And I think we talked about possibly adding a partition so that the two doors don't have access. Is that part of your new plan or?
Oh, yeah. We're, if the board would like to put that as a condition, by all means. Yeah, that, that's perfectly fine. Yeah.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Matt?
Matt?
Yes.
I have a question. Mr. Johnson. How many people sleep in no bedrooms? How many beds? No two rooms?
You're muted, Matt.
Muted.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. It's, there's a queen-sized bed, I believe it is, in each room. So it's, it's a double occupancy in each room.
All right. You don't have all the beds in there?
No, no, I, I'll double check with that. But I believe, I believe it's just the queen in each room.
A king in each room.
That's right, a king in each room.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt from the board? Okay. Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak about, to this application? Lori.
Good evening, Lori, you're pregnant. I'm here this evening. For record, I'm here to, on behalf of the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation, which is still not supportive of this application, as we stated in our second letter. We assume that both of the letters that have been from the previous hearing and this hearing will be part of the public record. I don't wish to repeat the information on it. But hopefully you'll go back and review that and comments that were made in the previous hearings that were a couple of months ago. But I would like to add some additional comments. The Heights, as you know, suggested by actually the zoning board, uses a standard of, standard list of guidelines when it looks at all the projects. And one of those guidelines is that if there is any immediate nearby neighbors with a credible objection to the project, that the Heights would not support the project. Because agreeing to that neighbor would make a credible argument, which means the Height is then aligned with their comments or their objection. A couple of things I want to comment on regarding, Matt, you know, typically a bed and breakfast, if you look at the definition, both in the town code and New York State Building Code, it is typically associated for sleeping, sleeping and a bed and breakfast, just like the name is derived. But it's not a hotel or an inn with a list of amenities. So that's something that, you know, to add amenities to something like that then becomes, where does it fall? The other thing that I want to talk about is the illustrations and the examples that Matt used, which he used at the first hearing as well. You know, the difference with these samples that he's showing you versus this structure. This structure is a contributing structure on the National Historic Register. The other properties that were shown to you are not. And that is a very big difference. So just wanted to emphasize that. The other thing I want to talk about is a little bit about is, you know, the site plan and respect to the site plan. The site plan, and the cure is actually kind of worse than the, the illness, so to speak. I use that metaphor because in an effort to mitigate the negative impacts of the proposed deck, such as noise or the use of this deck in a commercial type of, for the transient, I should say, better, that to install large plantings on or near the property line. This is a community that was designed originally in the eighteen hundreds as an open walking community. Now we start to see more and more of these hedges and other property line markers throughout our community, throughout Shelter Island, really. And it's just against what this, what the Heights was historically designed to be. I bring that to your attention only because, again, that's part of the reason that the Heights is in the National Historic Register so that it doesn't alter the character of the district. We've had not a good track record here with the applicant regarding landscaping. We don't believe that sufficient space has been allowed for the growth or the maintenance of either option, the hedgerow or the three trees. We have, for example, an existing hedgerow along Meadow that's on the property line. And it continues to be a maintenance problem, which we get continual calls from the neighbor across the way because those hedges grow into the street, which then obstructs and reduces the clearance for that person that's backing up. I only say that because if you're going to plant something, it's not like a fence. A fence doesn't grow, fence doesn't get bigger. Shrubs, trees, hedges, they all get bigger, they all grow. So the second part of that comment is there is a large cryptomeria pine tree that was planted many years ago on Heights property without the Heights approval. Sorry.
No, Lori's going to.
I just want to repeat that. With or without?
Without. Heights owns that ten-foot-wide alley between the properties. This tree has grown so large that it had, in the past, brushed against the Hunt's house and has been trimmed. It's currently brushing against the house. The tree's not shown on the site plan as an existing tree on the application that was submitted to you. It's approximately, approximately the middle of the alley. It's about sixteen feet from the Hunt's house. And why am I bringing this up, you ask? Because it appears the applicant may not be clear where his property line is. Or if he isn't, maybe it's the person that's doing the landscaping. So if there's something that's being considered, the Heights would ask for two things. One, that a surveyor come out and actually mark the property line. It'd be paid for by the applicant so that it's clearly marked and flagged before anything new is planted. The other concern we have is that enough space for growth, whatever's being planted, and the maintenance of that for trimming, if it's a hedge or whatever. Somebody's got to trim both sides of it. They can't just trim one side of it. And that we've asked, we ask that, you know, you give like a five-foot, to be planted five foot from the property lines so that you have room for these things to grow and room for whatever it is of the species of the plant. If it's a tree, then you're giving more than that based on the information that was provided. We are concerned about the sunlight or the shade that whatever is planted and how it's going to affect the Hunt's property. So I'm not sure that that was clearly illustrated because it wasn't illustrated on the landscaping plans. It was illustrated on a photo from, from an image. So making sure that if there's something planted, that that hedge post planted back because the Hunt's house sits back further than the Cummings house. If the Cummings sit up further. So if you plant something too close to that, you are going to obstruct the view. You are going to create more shade and less sun from which they have now. The second thing I want to talk about a little bit is the construction. The drawings, I understand, you know, typically come to the zoning board in a concept sketch. I get that. They don't want to spend the money before they find out if the zoning board's going to approve something, going too far with the construction drawings that may have to change later. Completely understand all that. But if you look at the side elevation of the exterior drawing, the blue with the decking, the kind of railing, looks like it pierces the roof slope. Because you can see the roof slope line through the, through the drawing there on the side. Now, the reason I bring that up is because I'm concerned about if the proper roof slope has been evaluated for the construction of that deck. Because it's only shown at a foot plus the railing. So if you're not, not detailing that correctly, then that whole railing and that whole structure of the deck on top of the roof is going to get higher. So that is something that I think needs to be further detailed so that you really understand what it is you're approving. Because in the last hearing, the applicant said that there was no change to the existing roof structure. But based on what I see on the drawing, I, I don't know how you can do that unless you cut into the existing roof somehow. Or the whole thing's got to get raised higher. It depends on how it's detailed, construction-wise. So I think it's something to further look at, is my point.
I just have a couple of questions, Lori. Do you consider the existing deck to be an amenity of the B and B?
Well, as I said, a bed and breakfast, if you look at the definitions, it's, a bed and breakfast is exactly what it's, what it's called. It's a place to sleep. It's a place to have breakfast. It's not a hotel. It's not an inn. Doesn't serve other food or drinks or have other amenities. I mean.
So my, but my question is, do you consider the existing deck to be an amenity? Yes or no?
I mean, personally, what I think, I mean, I, I do think it is an expansion of that amenity.
The existing deck, you think, is an amenity to the bed and breakfast?
The existing deck would.
The existing front deck porch, covered front porch?
I mean, that's part of, that front porch is part of the house. Everybody uses it. It's not just for the transient guests.
Okay, so it's, you would not consider that an amenity of the bed and breakfast?
No, because it's part of the house that everybody uses.
Okay, and then the second question is, I know you talked about the walking community and the character of the neighborhood. Would you consider the three proposed green giants to not be in keeping with that character? As opposed to the green wall of the hedge?
And I mean, yes, we have hedges and yes, we have other trees that aren't in character of the neighborhood. But I guess what I'm trying to say is that as they plant, as more and more gets planted, more and more of that character of the original historical district gets taken away. Because we're looking at planting things that are large, that are on property lines, that are taking the view and the vista away, that, you know, are approaching on neighbor's property or approaching on neighbor's property in order to be able to maintain.
All right, so you would view the three proposed trees, as opposed to the hedge, still an intrusion of that character?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Because those trees are still...
No, I, I, yeah, I don't need to, because I understand that just...
I don't know anything about plants and how big these things are going to get. And, you know, whoever thought that that pine tree that was planted in the alley is going to get so big that it, that it actually touches the Hunt's house?
Okay, I just wanted to get to the part of your rationale.
Have to be looked at, and I'm not a landscape person, and I certainly know very little about species of trees and how big they're going to get.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So those are some of the comments. I would say that if you decide that you're, you may approve this project, we would ask you to consider a few other things that, no, that we talked about at the last meeting, that no awnings or side panels be added to the deck in the future, that no roof be added to the deck in the future, no further encroachments on Heights property. Maintenance is made to be maintained so that it prevents encroachments. You know, you may want to look at considering no outdoor music on that deck. Specifically, you know, some people are hanging out, having a drink, you know, oh, the next thing is, oh, it would be nice to have some music. Some people might think that. The new railing, there, there were a couple of things at the last hearing where it was said that the new railing around that deck would match, but it was also said to be similar. So I just want to make sure that that's a very important difference in the historical contributing factor. Are we matching it or is it similar? And of course, the preference of the... Finally, just a few housekeeping items, you know. On the previous application or in this application, we talked about it at the last meeting, was there are a number of small other structures that were shown on the survey and the previous site plan. We couldn't find any reference to those or a B and B license or that the building inspector had annually certified this property as per 13314. We couldn't find anything in the building department files. So just want to, again, reiterate that because we couldn't find any reference. And we asked the building department and they said they didn't have any. So I don't know if that's true or not, but it's something that that we need to consider as part of this decision.
Okay. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to actually get you... Matt, Matt Sherman, you there?
Yes, I am.
I'm curious if you can address some of Lori's concerns, specifically the proper roofs, roof slope, as indicated on the plans in regard to the height, and then also the railings.
Yeah, railing first, it's going to be the same as the railing below, with the exception that it needs to be three feet high to meet building code. The first floor railing is a little under three feet high. So it's going to be the same railing, just it's going to be a little bit taller because of the, because of the code requirements. We looked at the roof on the, over the entire porch area. It's solid. It's in good shape. The roof pitch that what she's seeing on the drawing may just be an anomaly on the drawing, where some things aren't quite lining up just because it's a paper drawing. It was a 2D representation, but what we've got is two-by-ten floor joists, which are basically running from a ledger on the side of the building. And they're going to be running out to, and we went over this before, but it's going to be running out to the front edge of the, or the outside edge, I should say, of the, of the covered porch, so that the posts that are supporting that outside beam will be sitting on top of the posts that are supporting the roof to the, to the porch. We've looked at all of that. It's all in good condition. It's solid. There's, there's nothing wrong with it. So could something happen that, you know, that our investigation didn't show up? That's always a possibility. If that's the case, we'll take it up with the building department. If they feel like it's anything other than just a minimal change, then we'll have to come back to you guys for an amended, an amended approval.
Matt, I am, I am looking at the plans here and I don't see any heights on the deck or anything, unless I'm, unless there's a different plan that I'm not looking at. Is it possible for you to submit a plan with the railing heights in association with the roof and all that?
Yep, absolutely.
That would be great.
I have a question, Matt.
Yeah, punch.
What's the slope on the roof? How many inches to the, from the, against the house to the edge of the roof?
I don't have that exact number with me right now, but it's a little under a 212. So I would, I'd have to double check that and I can get that to you. I'll put that on the same drawing for the, with that elevation of the railing, so that it's all in one spot.
Are you going to put lattice work around that edge where you don't see the difference to hide it? Or are you just going to leave it open?
I hadn't really thought about it one way or the other. I can check with, with Bill and see what he'd like to do. You know, if it's going to be open, there's going to be a very, very small gap between the bottom of that floor joist and the top of that membrane roof that's over top of the, over top of that porch now. I think that lattice would be, would, would, would either be so minimal that you wouldn't even notice it, but so minimal also that it would be completely unnecessary.
All right. I just, just question because of the...
Yeah, I understand that, and I understand if you had more than a couple of inches difference and so you had a void, a noticeable void underneath that, that, that deck joist, I could certainly understand it. But you're not going to, it's, it's sitting just over top of the deck, the roof deck as it is now. So you're going to have just an inch or two, or maybe, maybe a hair more than that. But again, I'll, I'll give you a specific detail on that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Does anyone else have follow-ups for Matt about that? Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to present or speak to the application? Pat, come on.
Yes, speak to the application and speak to my neighbor for over 30 years.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes. And I guess I just, there have been so many changes next door to us. And, and it's like, this is the last area. And I'm thinking, well, then he'll be done, perhaps. It started with that tree that got planted. We were in the house a week. And it got planted in the Heights alleyway. We didn't know any better at the time and we wanted to say yes. Something we did say yes to, and then I couldn't sleep. And this is, you know, maybe 20 years ago, Leyland cypress. They wanted to put some in. And I got up in the middle of the night and looked them up and they are banned in England under the antisocial behavior law. And this is what they wanted to put in between us and them. We moved to the Heights because it's an old established neighborhood. And it, it's an intentional neighborhood, as Lori said, with walkways and open spaces and paths to connect front porches, to connect neighbor to neighbor. And that's being eroded. It's really been eroded the most on my little corner there, I have to say. And, you know, change happens. At least the change on one side happened with new owners. All this change has been happening not only with the same neighbor, but someone who grew up in the Heights and, and knows what it looked like and, you know, and enjoyed it along with his brother. All open space. And then luckily, my children were able to enjoy it, going up the alleyway to the Denfords to play with CJ. I mean, it was all open. So there was the tree, then there were the hedges along Meadow, which I make a look when I go to the post office and I come down Meadow in the winter, that street is completely shaded. The ice doesn't melt. I have to go up on Richie Sersitz's lawn to save. I'm not going to reroute myself because of those plantings. So, but I do go off the road onto the grass for safety. And then there was some lattice. And, but then outside of the lattice for us, there's the stockade fence and it runs the entirety. So really, the only area that hasn't been enclosed is what's been presented. I think those trees, I, I thought I read that they're going to be up on mounds. Well, that's, he put a berm in. When he dug out for the addition, a berm went in on the far side and evergreens put on top of the berm. I mean, I just feel like there's been a lot of change and for me, I'm not appreciating it. And...
I just have a quick question.
Doesn't have to be quick. Just a question. Sure.
With regard to the change, are you aware that someone's livelihood is dependent upon operating a bed and breakfast there?
Oh, certainly. The changes that have happened, they're not with the bed and breakfast. It's on the other lot and the addition between our property and their addition. That's where the initial one that was that tree in the alleyway.
No, I just wanted to get your take on the fact that, that is it actually, someone's livelihood is dependent upon the operation of the bed and breakfast?
Yeah, but all of that other stuff, that doesn't impact the guests and...
Okay, no, I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
There's so many comments that I mentioned that I wanted to say, to bring up.
I think the main thing is for just...
Bridget, if you're going to speak, you got to come up.
You got to come up to the podium.
It's not enclosure.
Yeah, yeah, enclosure. We had Michael Austin, who lived on the other side of us, and he was from England and he, everything was wide open. And he told us about Wayfarers in England, where you have a right to be able to walk and, you know. Anyway, he was a wonderful neighbor, but then he sold the property and it's enclosed. High hedges, you know, change, change. However, in the Heights, it's a little hard to take. You know, it'd be one thing, you know, in other parts of Shelter Island where it's commonplace. But in the Heights, it, it's unfortunate, I feel. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for your question.
Is there anyone else here in the room that would like to speak to the application? And I see we have a hand up on Zoom.
Hi, everybody. It's Stella Lagoudas from the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corp. Two things. One, I mean, I think it's an excellent question that Lynn asked about livelihood. I don't think, I certainly don't want to represent that the Heights does not want Bill to earn his living. You know, he's, for all intents and purposes, he's, he's been a very good neighbor. I think the question really is, at what point do you stop him from, you know, really monetizing now of you to the detriment of a nearby neighbor? So I, you know, I would just leave that with you. And the second thing is, I would hope that before you consider a journey, a journeying this hearing, that you would wait to see what the more detailed plans look like from Matt. So this way, we can all have some closure on the question about it not being, needing to be raised any higher. So thanks for listening.
Thank you, Stella.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak regarding this application? Christina, we have Pam.
There we go. Hi. Yeah, hi. I just like to add in my horticultural expertise. The reason those plants are called green giant arbivideas is because that's how big they get. They can go to 20 to 30 feet and 15 feet wide. You would have to do rigorous pruning on them every year to keep them as separated plants. They probably have to be planted more like 20 feet apart so that you continue keeping that distance open as a view. I don't, I don't see that as the answer to the issue, that it's privacy from the deck you're looking for and not at the ground level. And to achieve privacy at the deck, something like putting in a tree that has a trunk and then all of the foliage is at the height of where this, above the porch, would then provide the privacy of that deck to the neighbor. So an evergreen hedge at ground level doesn't seem to support the privacy that the neighbors would like to see from the project. And I just thought I'd add that in. I am a landscape designer. I've been in the business for 40 years. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. So do we agree that we can close this hearing? Just so that, but Matt will be submitting his plans for review, or we need to keep it open for that?
No, you could close the subject to written submission, but if he can get it by date certain and then the Heights and others could have an opportunity to review it and make comments and writing.
Okay.
So, Matt, how long do you think it would take you?
Give me a week, 27th.
Okay.
Okay.
Our meetings are early, right, in December?
Yeah, they are. They're the fourth.
Yeah, they're early.
So then everyone have a week then to review. Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll, I'll try to get it to you earlier than that if you've got a scrunch schedule. But yeah, let me just, you know, I may be able to get it to you by the beginning of the week.
Okay. So we're going to close this hearing, except for written submission and correspondence. I don't want to mess these dates up for you again, Matt.
I appreciate that.
Is it December 4th or the 11th?
The work session's closed.
Can I see that? I'm going really particular here for you, Matt.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, the fourth is work session.
Ring correspondence and those plans by the 27th of November?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll have our work session on the 4th regarding the submission and the application.
So any other comments you have on the period?
Yeah, so it should be 27th he gets the plans and then another week thereafter for any other...
So records open on December 3rd?
Until the 3rd.
Yes.
Thank you, Christina.
And what I'll do too, when I submit things to the, to the ZBA, I also submit them to the Heights directly and then Stella puts them out to the nearby neighbors. So everyone who's in that circle anyway should have a copy of stuff as soon as you guys do.
Thank you, Matt. Can I get a motion for? No, no, for all of that. For closing the hearing, except for written correspondence for Matt till the 27th for his-
I'll make the motion.
And then until the 3rd for all remaining correspondence.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We can bring Phil back in.
I have motion to close the meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.